Welcome to the I Love Seville Show. My name is Jerry Miller. Thank you for joining us on a Monday. It's our pleasure to connect with you. We're live in Charlottesville, Almar County, Central Virginia, the Commonwealth, the country and the world on the I Love Seville Network. Today's guest is Michael Payne. He's a Charlottesville City Councilor. We're trying to leverage the network to offer, you know, education, updates, guidance, a foundation to managing this coronavirus in our community. While the topics we're going to cover today pertain to Charlottesville, there's certainly topics that could scale to any community across the globe as we manage the pandemic. Judah, my friend, why don't we, Judah Wickhaver is our director. Judah, why don't we just go straight to studio camera today because we're tight on time? And welcome the city councillor to the show. We are maintaining social distance across the table here. Michael, good afternoon. Thanks for joining us.
Definitely. Thank you.
Update, open ended question, my friend. Anywhere you want to go. Where is Charlottesville, Virginia with the coronavirus today on a Monday? What is it, March 23rd?
Well, there's a lot going on, obviously. Obviously, there's a state of the coronavirus or COVID-19 statewide. As of yesterday, we were at 219 confirmed cases in Virginia. That number is likely larger than that because there's a severe shortage of testing available. Within Charlottesville, the, I think there's nine confirmed cases in the Thomas Jefferson Health District, which includes Charlottesville, Almar and some other surrounding localities, including Louisa. Again, that number is probably higher because of the lack of testing. In, across the state of Virginia, the governor has obviously issued orders for schools to be shut down for at least two weeks. That's very likely to be extended, in my opinion. We've had the order from the governor to avoid gatherings of 10 or more people, for restaurants to primarily operate only takeout and carryout. That's where we are statewide and at a city level. The city is currently only essential personnel are reporting in person to work. All people who are able to are working remotely currently. The city has been making a number of changes and doing everything that has the legal authority and resources to do to try to invest, address the coronavirus issue. So I'm sure we'll get into these in more depth along, through the discussion. But there's been actions taken locally around tax collection, around actions to try and support our local business community, actions around evictions. We've changed the way that the CAT system is operating. We've changed how the downtown center is operating, downtown transit center is operating. Obviously, the city hall has very much changed how it's operating in terms of very few in-person resources are available right now. People encourage to do it online. And again, as many city employees as possible are currently telecommuting.
How are you looking at this? Are you looking at this as, obviously as a leader? Are you looking at this concerned about, you know, the, the local economy? Are you looking about this concerned about what's happening in Charlottesville from its citizens? And in a job standpoint, from a how, I mean, there's so much going back here. I mean, you're so fresh to the job, all the three that came on board. I mean, how do you manage this?
Well, first and foremost, I look at it as a public health issue. The number one priority is doing everything that we have the power to do to ensure that as few people get sick as possible and to ensure that our, our hospital system, our nurses, our frontline healthcare workers are able to have as many resources as they need and that they're not overloaded. And that's the number one priority is that public safety and public health. From there, you know, I think there's going to be some pretty severe impacts for working families and low income people in Charlottesville, which I think there's obviously going to be an economic impact from all of this, which we're already seeing in terms of people who work in the service industry, a lot of people who work hourly jobs, suddenly seeing a sudden drop of income. You know, their rent is going to be due April 1st and that's going to create problems, not just in Charlottesville, but across the country in terms of trying to figure out how to manage that crises. And then tied into that as well is obviously this is going to be, have some major severe impacts on our local economy and the economy across the United States, which is going to have a huge impact on our budget. It's going to have a huge impact on everything in the city. And I think for myself, as well as other city councillors and the city manager and the team that's been working on the response daily is to just be transparent, to be honest and not speculate, say exactly what we do know, exactly what we don't know, exactly what we are doing and no BS, to just be honest about the scale of what's happening and what we have the legal authority and resources to do and what support we're going to need from the state and federal government to address this issue as well.
What are you hearing from UVA?
So UVA, you know, Charlottesville declared a local declaration of emergency, which followed the governor's statewide state of emergency. That allows Charlottesville, UVA and Almar to create a joint emergency operation plan. And through that joint emergency operation plan, there is a group of folks who again are meeting daily, including Chief Baxter, the city manager, officials from Almar County and UVA is a part of those planning discussions as well. And so that's been their main way that they've been dealing with the city through this so far. Obviously, UVA Hospital System is engaged in its own internal plans that as a city, we're not, you know, directly connected with everything going on there. But I know UVA obviously has been doing a lot in terms of students are not returning after the semester. They've canceled graduation. UVA Hospital System yesterday announced that they're ending almost all accepting any visitors in their hospital system. I know they've been working very hard to try and, you know, they've canceled elective procedures to try and maximize the number of beds and ICU beds available. And like hospital systems across the country, they're working with community members to one, get as many PPEs, personal protective equipment for frontline healthcare workers. There is a national shortage of gloves, of surgical masks, of N95 masks, of barriers for the healthcare workers who are going to be working on this, as well as trying to do everything possible to address this issue again of the national shortage of ventilators, which I think is from a public health perspective, I think one of the most severe impacts and why it's so important for people to pay, take self-quarantine and social distancing seriously is because of that national shortage of ventilators.
Ingrid Fiegans, welcome to the program. Thank you for watching. Kate Elwood, who's been a champion for the restaurant community is watching the show. Monica Johnson, Erin King, Chris Henry, the developer watching the program. Attorneys, entrepreneurs, heads of nonprofits, Charlottesville citizens watching alike. You know, one of the things I thought was pretty impressive with your campaign is you ran a phenomenal grassroots campaign, so authentic and genuine. You appealed to the everyday person. And I think one of the parameters that justifies that statement is how a lot of your donations came in. They came in in smaller amounts and you got a voluminous amount of donations, which is an indication that from a popular, people like you. You know, with your campaign of running for, you know, when, when you ran last year, you said, "I'm going to stand up and be a voice for the impoverished, for the people that are struggling housing-wise, from a food standpoint. I just want to be a voice." With what's happening now, it's brought like the, if it was like a dumbbell graph, it's brought folks from one end of the dumbbell graph, say maybe wealthy, and the other end of the dumbbell graph, almost to the middle. And everyone's kind of struggling with the same thing. I mean, take the restaurant community, the second largest employer in Charlottesville, waiters, servers, back of the house, front of the house, they're just in like purgatory right now. Let's talk about that category. Anywhere you want to go, and then I'll get into specifics. Restaurant category in Charlottesville and where it stands now.
Well, to the, to the broader point you made, which I think is absolutely true, is that, you know, this, this COVID-19 pandemic, not just in Charlottesville, but across the country, is exposing a lot of the gaps that we have had for decades in our social safety net.
It knows no skin color.
Everyone is affected.
Yeah.
But again, you know, people who have been historically marginalized, working families, low-income folks across the country, everyone's affected, but they're going to be feeling the most severe impacts and already feeling the most severe impacts. And again, it's exposing all these cracks in our social safety net, our healthcare system, our economy, that, you know, some people have been dealing, that's been their daily reality. They've been living with for decades. A lot of people are being exposed to that for the first time. And a lot of people who maybe were on the margins are being pushed into a very, you know, precarious situation. So that's definitely true of the broader point. And it's one of the major things that we're trying to do, everything we can as a city to address. When it comes to the issue of restaurants specifically, it's obviously already having and is going to have a devastating effect on the local restaurant community in terms of, you know, a lot of restaurants in good times, obviously are operating on very small margins. They, you know, they're hoping that a few good months can carry them through slower months in the summer, especially if their clientele is a lot of UVA students who are now all gone. So a lot of restaurants, again, are facing a really devastating situation, which is going to have a major negative impact on the city, one, in terms of our budget, because the meals taxes are second largest source of revenue. But much more important than that, I think, is you have all these service industry workers who are working hourly jobs, some of them who may not have health insurance or, you know, they don't, they're now seeing a sudden drop in income or maybe a sudden.
No income.
No income.
Yeah.
Without health insurance, or if they had health insurance, maybe they'll lose it. And that's going to create a problem throughout Charlottesville in this region of folks who perhaps for the first time are going to be facing an inability to pay rent, an inability to afford healthcare, food insecurity. And that is going to be a major impact, especially in the service industry, but I think across our economy for all hourly employer, employees. And then obviously there's the impact on the restaurants themselves, who are facing, again, you know, a major crisis in terms of how to maintain cash flow and, you know, and are facing, you know, a bleak reality of are we going to be able to stay in business? Because this is not something, I mean, we've seen the Department of Health and Human Services at the federal level, the New York Times reported on a report that they did about a week ago, where they said that this could last 12 to 18 months. This is not something that's going to last two weeks. This is going to be a month's long thing. And so in terms of what we have been doing as a city to try and address that, is there were members of the restaurant community who came forward at our last city council meeting, asking if there could be sort of a forgiveness of the meals tax for the last period that it was paid. The advice that we got from our Commissioner of the Revenue, Todd Divers, is that that would be in violation of state law because of existing state law that exists. If we as a city did that, it would expose every single restaurant to potentially being charged with embezzlement. And so he was very clear about that recommendation and that section of state law. What we have done is.
He's basically saying this, and I don't mean to interrupt you. He's basically saying this. The restaurants for the first quarter of 2020, when they put a receipt or a bill over to their customers, they had a line item for meals tax and were collecting the meals tax with the concept or the mindset that this money we collect goes in a bucket and this bucket is then passed on to the local municipality. If we keep this money that we had a line item for meals tax for, then that's embezzling because it's essentially bait and switch.
Correct. That's the advice that he gave to us.
Which makes sense.
And he was very, he was very clear about it and cited the state law because that tax is held in trust.
Yeah.
And if any restaurant uses that for other operating expenses under state law, they can be charged with embezzlement. So again, what we have done is, is what Richmond has explored. I don't know if Richmond has adopted it yet or not, but both our treasurer, Commissioner of the Revenue, last week announced that they are, one, suspending all collection action on past due taxes and two, suspending all penalties and fees for taxes that are paid late until at least May. And then, and again, reassessing that situation in May and extending that if needed, if the crisis is still going on. And so, and again, we're willing to, to be creative and do any solutions that we have the legal authority and resources to do. But I think a part of this is that we have to be honest, is that the scale of this crisis is going to go far beyond what we have as a city, have the legal authority and capacity to address. We can take those actions and we should. We've also suspended patio fees for downtown businesses on the mall. We can and should take all those actions, but we need to address that the cash flow problems that restaurants and local businesses are going to face and the impact on the employees is going to go far beyond what those policies are able to fix. And so what we are saying as well, and I think the community is saying, is to try and, to the extent that we have a voice and a platform to say to the governor and to the federal government, that we need substantial more support. And the governor last week announced that all small businesses in Virginia now are eligible for low interest rate federal loans to the Small Business Administration as part of an emergency disaster loan program. So there's again, are low interest federal loans for up to $2 million through action that the governor takes. Every local business can apply for those and there's an application online. I'm happy to, I have shared that link on social media.
On your Facebook page.
But I'm happy to share it again. But what we're going to need beyond that is a moratorium on evictions for residents, but not just residents, but small businesses. A moratorium on rent and mortgage payments for both residents and businesses. We're going to need federal support for paid sick leave and unemployment insurance for every worker who's suddenly been laid off. And we're going to need substantial amounts of low interest rate loans and grants for small businesses. And that's a need, not just in Charlottesville, but across Virginia and across the country. And again, we're committed to doing everything we can do locally, but we have to be honest that the scale of the crisis is going to demand those interventions from the state and federal government. And unfortunately, we do not have the legal authority to suspend evictions, rent payments or mortgage payments. And we do not have the resources to provide the amount of grants and loans needed to support every restaurant. This is something, you know, we may, again, we may be able to create some kind of small revolving loan fund. I don't know if we have the resources to do that or not. It's, but even if we can set that up, which we could and should do, it's not going to be enough resources for every small business facing these devastating impacts.
A lot of people commenting here. We'll get to the comments and put the comments in the comment section. And I'll pass the questions and comments on to councillor Michael Payne here. Two got, let's, you say all the right things. You're so bright. Two dudes at a table, six feet apart, just talking here, okay? UVA's shut down. The restaurants are at a standstill. One restaurateur told me, he thinks 20% of the restaurants are going to close permanently, never open again. Tourism is at a halt, literally a halt. Schools aren't in operation right now. I mean, just Michael Payne, the guy who grew up in this area, I mean, what do you make of what's happening? Where's this going to go? I mean, what's going to happen to a Charlottesville, do you think?
Well, this is, this is a crisis without precedent, certainly within our lifetimes. And so we, we don't know where it's going to go. We know that it's going to be bad. We know that it's going to be an extended period of time, of months. But that means, because we know that it's going to be bad, that means that we, you know, we need to start as a community organizing and preparing mutual aid to think about what can we do to strengthen our social safety net in terms of food insecurity, our homeless shelters, emergency shelters, emergency relief to families or individuals facing sudden extreme financial circumstances. It's going to require all of us to come together as a community to address these issues from the economic side. But from a public health perspective as well, again, that's the number one priority. We know that on average, without self-quarantine, every person with COVID-19 transmits it to two to three other people, closer to three. And we're at 219 confirmed cases. And the way that these cases are going to go is exponentially. It's not linear. So multiply 219 by three, and again, that's, that's assuming the lowest number is probably higher than that. But multiply 219 by three, multiply that by three, multiply that by three.
It's scary.
And you can see it escalates. And so if we look at projections, the, we are going to start to see the most extreme impacts from early to mid-April, and we know that. And so that is why we're doing everything that we have the power to do to try and limit social interactions and really highlight for people that self-quarantine and social distancing is not an option. You taking that action is going to save the lives of frontline healthcare workers, your neighbors, your family members and possibly yourself. Across the country, the most vulnerable patients are elderly folks and people with underlying health conditions. But 20% of hospitalizations in the US so far are folks who are 20 to 44. Almost half of people in the ICU in the United States are under 65. There have been cases of individuals who have died of all ages and all underlying health conditions. No one is immune to this. And again, even, even if you are asymptomatic or have not severe symptoms, if you are out in public, you are going to transmit it to someone who does have an underlying health condition. Maybe an underlying health condition they don't know about. You are going to be a risk to the nurses and healthcare workers who are doing everything they can to treat patients while still dealing with this shortage of gloves and masks and other necessary equipment. So again, that, that public health perspective, I think, is the most important for us. And it's, it's scary and I think people should acknowledge that. This is something we haven't experienced before, but I think we need to take it seriously and we need to be honest about what we can expect, but we also need to not panic. And we need to recognize that life is going to change, but life will go on. There are countries across the world right now or in recent years who have been experiencing these kind of economic shocks. You know, you look at countries that have experienced sanctions that create food shortages and severe economic impacts. They've survived in American history and World War II and past pandemics. We've survived. And we need to keep that in mind and do everything we can again to come together as a community to support mutual aid efforts, to support community efforts like Support Seville, which has brought together resources for local residents and realize that this is the kind of thing that it's impossible for us to get through alone. The only way we get through it is as a community and coming together to support each other.
You're getting a lot of props. Keith Smith, our common friend, says you're one smart dude. You're getting love from Gracie Haynes. She says you're a voice of reason. Chris Turner in Belmont says, "This is why I voted for Michael Payne." I'll get to the questions in the comments here. Kate's got one in regards to the restaurant industry. We'll get to. You're, you have two board of supervisors from Almar County watching you as we speak. Throw this topic to you. Does this, does the council or the city in totality consider delaying this whole budgetary process right now?
So that, again, just being honest and transparent, that is something that there's no question that we're going to have to do. We've already delayed two budget work sessions that were scheduled for this week. And we know that we're going to start to see the most severe impact starting in early to mid-April. And that's when other budget meetings are scheduled. So those aren't going to be able to happen, at least normally.
Right.
City staff has been working on revised budget projections in terms of both fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 2021. The budget forecast is obviously dramatically different with substantially lower revenues.
What kind of delta are we talking there? We're talking two and a half percent, 5%?
So I'm not sure about percentage. And these are, these are very early estimates and these are ballpark numbers. So don't necessarily totally quote me on it. But they're, some of what we're starting to look at is, you know, revenue projections down over $1 million fiscal year 20, where the impact is the lowest.
Right.
Because a lot of that tax has already been collected.
Right.
And for fiscal year 21, looking probably at revenues reduced by at least $5 million.
So that's two and a half percent of a $200 million budget.
Around that. And again, these are, these are very preliminary numbers.
Sure, sure.
It will very likely change.
Depends on how long this happens.
And it depends on what support comes from the federal government and the state government. But that is just, and those estimates came out just to start for us as a council to start to brainstorm about the fact that this budget is going to be very, very different than what we first assumed. So again, the process is going to have to be delayed. I know Almar County has pushed back the adoption of their budget. The challenge that we're going to face is that, at least at the moment, state law does mandate a hard deadline for when municipal budget has to be finished. And that is the end of June. So normally our target is around, you know, later to April to early May. That's definitely going to be pushed back. But unless some kind of action is taken from the governor in order to extend that hard stop deadline of the end of June, we're still going to have to find a way to finish that budget by that date. And so one of the things that we are working on is figuring out how to hold these meetings while still maintaining public engagement. You know, we piloted some of the public engagement through Zoom. You know, I thought it worked pretty well.
Yeah.
And that's something we can explore perhaps at budget work sessions down the road. And we're also trying to figure out, you know, what abilities do we have to meet remotely as a council in order to properly practice social distancing and other things? The Attorney General recently released an opinion about the ability of localities to meet remotely during this emergency. But it is something that we need to be very careful about as a locality because you, we, we don't want to do anything that limits public engagement or that goes against the intention of the Freedom of Information Act. We want, and so that's one of the things we're trying to figure out is how to, how to maintain that schedule.
You're basically saying you don't want to assume everyone has an ISP, has access to an internet and could get this content as they should if they were able to show up in person.
Absolutely. You know, there's that aspect of it, as well as the fact that even if people do have access to the internet, you know, there are just some barriers that come with the Zoom process. You know, I, again, I thought it worked really well and it's, there are other localities around the state which have, didn't have any public comment or engagement. So I'm very, Brian Wheeler, you know, shouts out to him for working on that, as well as a lot of other communications during this crisis, has been doing a really great job. So again, you know, that's, that's one of the challenges, but there's no question about it. The budget process is going to be delayed from the original timeline we had and it is going to be a very, very different budget in terms of both the revenue projections, which means that we're going to have to look at every expenditure that was sort of, we baked in there. We're going to have to reassess and we're especially going to have to reassess new expenditures that are recurring because maybe they're still feasible in this fiscal year 20 budget, but we know in fiscal year 21, they may not be.
Makes perfect sense. Scott, Scott Chauncey, the chef, your fellow brother from Almar High School says hello and thank you for fighting the good fight. Michael Payne, he's watching at Bell Restaurant in Belmont right now. One of the co-owners. You have some teachers at Almar High School that say they're proud of you. We'll get to these comments here as well. Throw this to you. I mean, do we now start? And you're kind of doing this. I'm a little more, my wife calls me very blunt, if you may. Not, and she does not mean that in a good way, but you're kind of doing this already. I mean, do we not get ahead of this and say, "Look, guys, the, the potential", and we're not talking specifics. I'm just going broad strokes here. But firefighters, the schools, you know, roads, I mean, there's not going to be enough money to pass around. Everybody has the hat out and wants money in the hat. There's not going to be enough money to pass around. You just need to temper your expectations now of what's coming ahead. Is that kind of what you're doing?
I think it's, it's just the reality. Again, revenues are going to be substantially down and we're going to have to look across the board at spending and significantly revise the budget that we sort of thought we were working towards. Nobody knows for sure how that's going to break down, but we know that broadly, it's going to have to happen.
Can a UVA help with this? Can we go to a UVA like in that billions and billions endowment and say Charlottesville is as much UVA as UVA is as much Charlottesville? Help us here with our budget. Has that ever happened?
I, I don't know if it's happened in the past. I mean, again, I know that both Almar County, Charlottesville and UVA have been working together on the response to COVID-19 and are very much thinking of themselves as sort of one region. And if, it only helps everyone in the community if Charlottesville, UVA and Almar have a coordinated response.
Of course.
And so I don't know what, what specifically it may look like, but I think UVA would certainly has a positive role to play. It has been playing a positive role, especially when you look at how their hospital system has been preparing for COVID-19. But it's definitely, it's definitely something that could help. And again, it's going to be a regional impact, a statewide impact. And the most important support that we can get is from the federal government. And to get support for small businesses and to get money in people's hands and to strengthen our social safety net, especially when it comes to healthcare and unemployment insurance. Because again, you know, Goldman, you know, Goldman Sachs revised GDP projection for this next quarter is negative 5%.
Yeah.
We've seen historic spikes in applications for unemployment insurance. And that is something that federal government is just going to have to address if we want to avoid a severe economic downturn. And we see countries around the world that are responding to this. You know, Italy has suspended mortgage payments or countries that have explored suspending rent payments, suspending all evictions, support for small businesses. That's going to have to happen. And I do, this is getting back to an earlier point, but I do want to, I was minded as well that when it comes to eviction actions, some additional actions that we have taken of a city include all Charlottesville redevelopment and housing authority properties, our public housing. All evictions and voucher suspensions are temporarily on hold. And the governor announced that the Virginia State Supreme Court has closed most court activities, which means that there is a statewide suspension on new eviction proceedings throughout the state. It could still be stronger, but that's the CRHA properties are the only properties that we have the authority as a locality to stop evictions on. And then again, that action from the state is at least providing a little bit of help.
It's a super slippery slope. And Simon Davidson of Charlottesville 29 is chiming in with a comment. Simon, we'll get to this comment in a matter of moments about the meals tax. It's a slippery slope because if we throw a bone to the restaurant industry and the restaurateurs, which we 100% should, the next thing that's going to happen is then the landlords are going to come to city council and city hall, and the landlords are going to ask for a break on, you know, real estate taxes. And they're going to say just what the restaurant owners have said. The restaurant owners have said, all our customers are gone. Help us with this meals tax. And Simon Davidson says this, and I'm going to throw it to you. Charlottesville 29, Councillor Payne is absolutely correct that the law does not allow city council to waive the collection of meals tax that they've already collected. That was very well put, Councillor Payne. That's what Simon says. What the law does allow is for city council to suspend the meals tax on an ongoing basis and then change that meals tax collection line as a quote, restaurant survival fee quote. So basically rebranding the meals tax as a restaurant survival fee, keeping that restaurant survival fee as working capital and then not paying money to city hall as the meals tax moving forward. I like that idea. I, I proposed a similar idea last week. Then I got to thinking more, and dude, I do not envy you. I respect you. I'm so grateful for you, and you're working your ass off. But if this happens, then why wouldn't the landlord say suspend or abbreviate or pause real estate tax? Why wouldn't every category follow suit? How do you handle that?
Well, I think part of the, the, the challenge of COVID-19 is not just Charlottesville, but again, across the country is that there are very specific industries that are hit particularly hard. You know, again, when it comes to that idea, again, our treasurer and commissioner of the revenue have announced that there is suspending collection action on past due taxes and suspending late fees and penalties for late taxes. That's an idea that I'm, you know, we're more than willing to entertain ideas and try to be creative. I'm more than willing to, to present that idea to our treasurer, commissioner of the revenue and city manager and, and get their feedback. At this point, I just, I don't know enough information to say whether it's something that would be the right action for us as a city to take at this point, but I'm, we're willing to explore any creative action and idea that people have. I think, but you know, there's no, the impacts of this are going to be across all sectors of our local economy. And so, you know, I'm particularly worried about renters and how they're going to maintain a place to live. You know, landlords are a part of that discussion. But I think the reality is that there's going to be, you know, there, there's no, I don't think there's any one sector of the economy which can say, I'm suffering the worst. Everyone's suffering and everyone needs assistance. It's not either or. And again, the challenge is just that we have limited legal authority and we have limited resources. And so to address the needs that exist across all economic sectors locally, we're going to need that support from the state and federal government. And I do want to mention as well, another action the city has taken in addition to suspending evictions and section eight voucher terminations for CRHA properties. The city is not engaging in utility cutoffs for customers. So folks are able to still maintain sort of that basic ability to still have access to water, which is again, something localities across the country are doing. And again, just anticipating the economic shock there's going to be. So again, I, you know.
It's fluid, is what you're saying.
It's fluid, but the, but you know, everyone's, the restaurants are suffering.
Yeah.
Landlords are suffering, tenants and renters are suffering, restaurant employees are suffering. Our hotel industry is suffering. It's, it's bad.
Cecilia Mills says, I appreciate the restaurants and they are doing a great job at PR, but there are hundreds of people not working, housekeepers, hotel employees, nannies, massage therapists, chiropractors, many jobs held by refugees in this town. We need to think more broadly. I'm going to throw this to you and get out of the way. This topic is coming up often. If Charlottesville does not find jobs for folks that do not have higher education, let's say we take away a lot of the jobs in the restaurant industry, a lot of the jobs that are working in group settings outside, a lot of these jobs being replaced by the internet. Do you worry at all that this wealth gap in this community is going to get exponentially worse?
Absolutely. And I think, again, that's the case across the country because this pandemic is exposing the weaknesses in our economy, our social safety net, our healthcare system, and it is going to explode those inequalities that have already been existing. And you can, we're already seeing the impacts. Again, you think about this huge spike in sudden unemployment. Our unemployment insurance in this country, a lot of people aren't even eligible. Like if you're an independent contractor driving for Uber or Lyft, you're not going to be able to qualify. The amount of assistance you're going to get is limited in terms of the time period you can receive it. The amount of money you get from it may not be enough to meet basic needs. You think about all these people who are facing sudden unemployment. If they had employer health insurance, they are now uninsured. And with no income, they may not be able to afford, depending on what their financial situation is, health insurance through the Affordable Care Act marketplace if they don't qualify for Medicaid. You're seeing folks who maybe have health insurance, but it's weak health insurance. And if they get sick and they go to the hospital for COVID-19, they're going to have $30,000 plus of bills that they can't afford. You know, almost half of Americans don't have more than $400 in savings. So when you have a crisis like this that is causing sudden unemployment, most people in this country cannot afford one month's rent, much less three from their savings and car expenses and health insurance and food. And so it's, it's definitely going to be, unless significant action is taken from the federal government, you know, it's going to have extreme negative impacts on inequality and, and working families in, in the city.
Elliot Harding, attorney, has this question. Michael, can you speak to the steps that are being taken with ACRJ and the steps the city is making to assist the inmates? They're living in a ticking health crisis. That's a good question.
This is a great question. And Mayor Nakia Walker is the council member who sits on the jail board. And she's had conversations with us as a city council about some of the actions that are taken. She knows this answer much more in depth than I do, but I know some of the things she mentioned is that throughout the criminal justice system regionally, they're doing everything they can to try and limit pretrial detention to be as loose as they can in terms of requiring bond payments, in terms of letting people out of jail, to try and just minimize to the maximum possible effect, the number of people who have to be in the jail. So I know that's happening. I wish I had more, I could speak about that with more specificity. And I, I'll, I'll ask the mayor again to try and get more of the specifics. But I know that is something that's being addressed regionally. The major problem I think is going to be from a statewide perspective. I think it was in the Virginia Mercury. They did a recent article about how, you know, the state said that there are no cases of COVID-19 in state prisons, but they haven't done any tests.
Sure, of course.
So, um, so there's that problem of a lack of testing there. But I think his point is a really, really, really important one is that, you know, our conditions in our jails across Virginia and across the country are really bad. They're crowded environments. We've seen reports coming from prisons, not in Virginia, but across the country who don't have any hand sanitizer, who are seeing outbreaks, having little, if any, access to healthcare. And that is going to be a major issue. And that's something, you know, I've, I've asked questions about that, and I'll continue to ask questions about that, you know, at the meetings we have discussing the regional response to COVID-19 as well as relatedly, I think another major area is what is happening at immigrant detention centers. And we have, you know, we have a number of them in Virginia. I think the closest one to us is in Farmville. You know, that is another area where there's a very vulnerable populations to COVID-19. And what we are seeing so far is that the response is incredibly inadequate.
Is there innovative ways the county, Alamo County and the city of Charlottesville can work together throughout this? What can be done to strengthen communication, work and, you know, share? Sharing money is not going to happen, but how can we work together?
Again, you know, when we issued our local declaration of emergency following the governor's state of emergency, that allowed Charlottesville Admiral and UVA to create a joint emergency operation plan, which is underway. And there are daily meetings that includes stakeholders from Charlottesville Admiral and UVA who are meeting daily to discuss the joint response to COVID-19. We have the Thomas Jefferson Health District, which covers Charlottesville, Alamo and a number of surrounding localities that is also part of a statewide structure. And that also provides regional information and communications. They're, they put out regular updates daily. They've stopped releasing press releases for each new individual case of COVID-19 in the Thomas Jefferson Health District. But they are still putting out daily communications. So that's one avenue where there's joint communications and there's ongoing joint planning. But there's no question that that needs to continue to develop, to strengthen it over time because we know this is going to something that's going to last months, not weeks. And to do everything we can to be putting out communications together that reach as many people as possible. And that's something that I know is being worked on. And I know as well, it's not, it's not regional, but I know Brian Wheeler as well is working on some ways to get communications out to more people, including through updates on local public access TV and other things. So that's something that's being worked on. But it's definitely, it's definitely a priority for us is because, you know, we're two weeks into this crisis. And, you know, it's something that's unprecedented and, you know, we're, the situation changes hourly. And we are doing the best we can to try and strengthen our response and to be communicate clearly to the public the actions that we have already taken, to communicate the actions that we don't have the legal authority, the resources or take. And I think also communicate the actions that we need the state and federal government to take, which is going to be very important.
Cina McGill, big fans of Cina McGill here. We saw the story in the Daily Progress over the weekend. How is councillor McGill doing? Second part of the question, obviously, her health is our primary focus. Second part of the question is, what keeps this from spreading throughout council? I know she's in quarantine now. How do we go about running the city with one of the councillors maybe positive for coronavirus? What's going down?
Well, again, to be clear, she attended a conference that where two people later tested positive for COVID-19. She's gotten tested, but she hasn't received the results back yet. So we don't know if it is COVID-19 or not. But at the past budget work sessions and the past council meeting, she participated electronically through a conference call. And you are allowed in the state of Virginia, any elected official can participate electronically in a meeting for a medical reason. And you can do that an unlimited number of times. If you're, if you're, if you're participating electronically for non-medical reasons, you can only do that three times a year. But if, again, if it's a medical reason, you can do it unlimited. So she's participated that way, which is one way to, you know, not spread, you know, if she is in fact positive, which again, we don't know. But if any councillor was positive, that's one way to limit it from spreading to other councillors. And the other part of it is, again, what we're exploring is how can we meet electronically as much as possible, but while still allowing for public participation and not undermining the intent of the Freedom of Information Act and open meeting laws. So that's something we're trying to figure out. And, you know, if we do have to hold in-person meetings, obviously just doing better to make sure that we're at least six feet apart from each other and that city staff members are six feet apart from each other. And if anyone is sick at all, to just participate via conference call, whether to come in person, limit person-to-person contact. But it's, it's definitely something that a city, you know, we're, we're thinking about, have already taken action on. Again, most city employees are telecommuting already, except for some essential personnel. The way that cat operates has been changed so people get on the bus, come in from the back to limit exposure, both for other people riding the bus and the bus drivers. So it's, it's definitely, and I think her situation highlights one of the major problems is that there's just a lack of testing.
Yeah.
And that even individuals who do get tested will have to wait multiple days.
Right, the extended period of time of not knowing.
Of not knowing, which creates huge problems. And again, you know, some of the data, very preliminary, but some data we've seen from some of the countries that have already experienced, are experiencing this pandemic is that, you know, perhaps upwards of 40% of young people who have COVID-19 are asymptomatic. And even people who develop symptoms, it can take, once you get it, it can take up to 14 days for you to start showing symptoms. But that entire 14 day period, you're still contagious. And if you never develop symptoms, you're still contagious. And so in order to really address this, we're going to need widespread testing for everyone. And that is what South Korea has done, and it's been extraordinarily effective. And if we want to end this as quickly and as effectively as possible, it's going to require testing for everyone because the only way you effectively reduce the spread is you know for sure who has it and who doesn't. And you say, we know you have it, so just stay in self-quarantine for two weeks. Don't go out anywhere. And that's how you try to squeeze out the numbers. But when you don't know who has it, or you don't know if maybe you have it, but you aren't sick yet, or do I just have the cold? Or is it this? When that's the situation, there's, it's just, unless, unless people take self-quarantine and social distancing very seriously, it's just going to be a very widespread spread, which is going to strain our limited hospital resources.
We'll spend the final few minutes with councillor Michael Payne asking questions or answering questions. This is from Grace. Jerry, I don't watch the news. I cut the cord a long time ago. I don't get the newspaper. The last 50 minutes here with councillor Payne has been the most information I've received on the coronavirus in Charlottesville. And I'm very grateful. It's a scary time. It's a sobering time for all of us, especially us moms with kids. Thank you for making this content approachable and offering, offering us knowledge in a scary time for all of us. James Watson says he is one smart guy at his, at, when I was his age, I was tripping over my feet. Charlottesville is lucky to have Michael Payne. This topic has come up a number of times. You ran on a fabulous campaign, a lot of it housing related, affordable housing related. How, as a councillor with like such a bright future here, where you're so like focused? I mean, you work for Habitat for Humanity here, you know, affordable housing is in your blood. How do you keep that a priority when coronavirus is happening here in Charlottesville? I mean, does this not end up being the legacy for your first term on council? If there is other terms for your first term here, this is going to be your legacy. How do you keep the priority checklist in order?
Well, you know, certainly no one on city staff or on city council anticipated that this would be something we'd be dealing with this year. But the situation is the situation. And so what we need to do as, as individual councillors and as a city government is to, again, to just be clear and doing everything we have the power to do to address it, to communicate with the public, everything that we're doing and everything that other people could do to help address the crisis. And that's the number one priority because public health and safety is at risk. And I think for, you know, when it comes to affordable housing and other issues, it's just recognizing that none of these issues are in silos. They're all connected to one another and that we're, when we're looking at the economic impacts of this pandemic, that means for, you know, the majority of people that see a sudden drop of income, that means facing eviction, not able to afford rent and mortgages, not able to afford food and basic necessities, not able to afford healthcare. And that this pandemic is just accelerating an already bad situation of affordable housing and inequality locally. And so just doing everything we can again to, to end evictions, provide people support to still be able to afford housing and, and approach it from that angle.
Dr. Gunderson has a comment for you. Guys, fantastic interview. If you could ask councillor Payne about economic policy. Should we extrapolate from the healthcare field by trying to support the most vulnerable and those in urgent need? What are the public health and economic implications for the broad community with this approach? Interesting topic from someone in medicine. What do you think on that one, Michael Payne?
I think our priority as a city government and as a community should be supporting the people facing the most severe impacts. There are some supports that are already available through our local Department of Human Services. There's an emergency relief fund that's been active for years where individuals can receive emergency assistance. But again, that's a limited pot of money, and the need is going to be greater than the money allocated there. You know, again, we've taken action through the Housing Authority to stop evictions and section eight voucher terminations, stopping utility shut offs. But I think that is going to be. But I think that is going to be, you know, in a pandemic, you're only as safe as your most vulnerable resident, your most vulnerable community member. So, you know, if there are folks facing homelessness or the people who are already in our unhoused community, which is already, you know, there's a significant number of unhoused people in our local community. If you're looking at people who suddenly don't have access to, to water or food, that only accelerates both the spread of it and the negative economic impacts. And so I think that is really important for us to focus on that aspect of it. And as well as, you know, focusing on, like Elliot Harding brought up earlier, the folks in our prisons and our detention centers who are extremely vulnerable. And if we don't show them decency and give them the support and resources they need, that will also make the pandemic worse and cost lives.
Lucas Sacks, another Alamo patriot, proud to have been in the same class as Michael Payne at Alamo High School. I'm watching from Denver, where I've been for the last five years, but my entire family is still in Charlottesville. And this is great for me to be informed with the community. I know the entire community feels the same way. Tim is watching in North Downtown. I try to tune into your program all the time, Jerry. I've learned a lot from Michael Payne on the program today. I'm curious why you don't welcome the city manager onto the program. Tim, to respond to that, I've reached out many times to Brian Wheeler about getting Dr. Richardson on this show. He has an open invitation anytime he wants to come on the program. The long form content offers a lot of safety because nothing can be taken out of context in long form. Dave Norris, thanks for the stable and intelligent leadership that Counselor Payne are showing on this show. Same with Counselor Snook on the show earlier last week. This is from Dave Norris. Vivid contrast to what we've seen from the White House. I totally agree, Dave Norris. Dave Norris has a question for you. Is there anything more that state or local governments can do to increase and enhance testing or access to testing? Hallelujah about UVA getting its own testing late last week. That is a good question though. Local and state impacting access to testing.
It's a, it's obviously a major issue. As you mentioned, UVA has developed their own test, which should help, you know, but they're still scaling that up and there's still somewhat limited deployment, but it's, it's much better than what it was before. The major problem initially is just that the CDC at the federal level only made an extremely small number of tests available. And in fact, there was a report today that every locality in the country got the same amount of tests. So New York City got the same amount of tests as Nelson County.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, there, there are tests through the private sector. They're more expensive. The CDC test is free for any individual getting it, but the private sector tests are not. But I know that especially UVA, obviously developing their own and, and, you know, just trying to do everything possible to get as much tests as we can. But again, the problem is just, there's just a shortage because people across the world are ordering not only tests, but the basic supplies you need to conduct a test like this. And so there's also a shortage of some, just the basic medical supplies that you can conduct a test with. But we're doing everything we can to try and strengthen that supply chain network and coordinate through donations in the private sector to get as many as possible. And the good news is, is that the, the tests, from when this first started, the tests have significantly ramped up. So we are on a good trajectory of being able to get widespread tests, but we're just, the supply chain has been so weak and there was such a failure to plan for this months ago at the federal government that we're struggling to catch up. But that, I guess, is the silver lining is that it is scaling up rapidly.
Laura Rippon has this, and we'll close by just saying, anywhere you want to go. You have moms, dads, parents afraid. We have families not leaving the house for a week. People are going stir crazy. People are terrified. You have the hysteria that's social media. Laura Rippon says, please give my huge thanks to Counselor Payne. This is the first time I've had a chance to get to know him and his platform. Thank you for hosting this show. Please consider hosting more of our city leaders on this program. People get their news from Facebook, including me, my family and my street. This was much needed in a time of tremendous fear for all of us out in Charlottesville. Thank you for leaving that vulnerable comment there. Anywhere you want to go on this topic, advice, stay the union, anything you want to offer? It changes every day.
Yeah. I guess I would say, you know, as I mentioned earlier, that this is, this is something unprecedented. We haven't experienced this within our generation and it's scary. There's a lot of uncertainty and I think it's important that we acknowledge that. But at the same time, we shouldn't panic. We should acknowledge that we don't, this is, there's a lot of uncertainty and we don't know what's coming. We know there's going to be major changes, but again, it doesn't mean that life is ending. It means that life is changing and it's just something that we have to adjust to. And if we look at countries across the world, if we look at the United States throughout our history, we have faced crises like this. We have faced crises greater than this as a species and it's something that we're able to navigate and come through. It just means we have to adjust what our day-to-day life looks like and we need to, now more than ever, I think, really understand the importance of community, understand the importance of kindness to one another, to recognize that everyone right now going through this is facing a crisis that they don't know how to deal with. Everyone is struggling to figure out what to do. Everyone is fearful. And for us just to be able to recognize that in all of us, but still be able to come together and recognize that I think the greatest strength we have in Charlottesville for addressing COVID-19 is the strength of our local community. We've already seen community initiatives through the Food Justice Network to supply food for people who aren't able to afford food, delivering meals to children in our city schools, now that city schools are closed down and that's something that they're continuing to do. Every week, deliver meals to people. We see, you know, our food pantry and still operating. We see our homeless shelters trying to expand their work past their normal season. We see community initiatives like supportseville.com, which I encourage anyone to check out. It provides a pretty comprehensive list of all resources available to community members as well as ways that you can donate either money or supplies to these initiatives. And they, just yesterday, through Support Seaville launched an initiative, Equip Seaville, to collect donations from people across the community for the medical equipment that our frontline healthcare workers need, N95 masks, surgical masks, gloves. And just today at Champion, they were collecting donations.
Saw that.
All these things are happening. And so, you know, it's important that we recognize that this is serious, that we don't sugarcoat it and that we be honest about what's happening. But once we understand the severity of it and what's happening, to not just get overwhelmed, to also focus on what our community is doing in response to it and the positive things that are happening. And to recognize that again, as a community, we're going to get through this. It just means that we're going to have to change what day-to-day life looks like. And for people to be kind to yourself, you know, I know people say it all the time, but really, you know, make sure you're eating well, make sure you're, to the extent possible, trying to eat healthy. Make sure that you're still going on walks. Check out our trail system and our sidewalks, which are great throughout the city. Even just, you know, two miles of walking a day is, is, you know, if you're inside, is still healthy, if you're, as long as you're six feet away from people. Being able to be out in the sunlight and, and, and nature helps your immune system as well as helps you de-stress. And to just, again, think about all of these things in terms of our response and to think about some of the positive aspects of all this, which I think is just the incredible solidarity and strength of our community. And, you know, for everyone who's self-quarantining or staying indoors, the reason you're doing that is not because you're in isolation, it's because you want to help community members with underlying health conditions. You're doing it because you want to help the nurses and healthcare workers who are putting their lives on the line, working 12-plus hour days to try to address our healthcare needs. You're doing it for the people who are, again, collecting these supplies and resources for folks facing economic emergencies and, and all of that's happening. And so take it seriously, recognize that this is real and we do need to take action and not, you know, just be casual about it. But again, keep all that stuff in mind as well.
Rachel Smith says, this is the first time I've gotten to know this gentleman, similar to the last comment. He is a voice of reason. Thank you for having him on the program. Please keep following the storyline closely, Jerry, and offer us coverage as we're at home wanting to know what is happening. I think that's fair. I think people just want to know what's going on. I'm grateful for you.
Yeah, and, and thank you for having me on. Again, I think, again, there's just a lot of uncertainty and, and it's really important that we be clear in communication and come together as a community. And, you know, another thing I'd say as well is that there is a lot of misinformation on social media.
Yeah.
And I think now more than ever, it's really important that we have the facts. And our local media is doing a really great job, you know, through your program, through the Daily Progress, has an entire portal for all their COVID-19 coverage.
They removed the paywall.
Right, they removed the paywall. Seaville Tomorrow similarly has, you know, they're almost exclusively covering COVID-19 and has stories.
They pivot their whole model.
Yeah.
NBC 29's got a running database of businesses that are open.
Yeah, and, so it's, I think it's really important for people to support local journalism and local journalists who are covering this locally. Because they're getting clear facts and delivering information. And I know they're working really hard. I think it's really important. And again, for folks to check out supportseville.com, which has a very comprehensive list of ways you can donate, or if you need assistance, apply for it or receive it.
Well, and if you ever, and close on this, if you ever want to hop on, you have Carp Lunch as well. You know, we just make contact like we do and we get you on here. Dr. Richardson is welcome anytime. I mean, I know you don't speak for him. We've extended, the people are asking about Dr. Richardson. We've extended the invitation through Brian Wheeler many times to get him on the show. All we want to do is put content that's educational and approachable on these things. Because we know people aren't sitting on a couch watching a box anymore, they're getting news here. So we go to the source, smart people like him. Thank you for coming on the show. We'll archive, a lot of people are asking this, we'll archive the show in totality so you can hear Michael Payne start to finish on iloveSeaville.com. We'll also turn it into a podcast on Apple Podcasts and on iTunes today. And then for the next couple of weeks, we'll syndicate it, the show across our network, which reaches just over, a little over 253,000 people. We're working hard to just put facts out there and welcome smart people on the show like Michael Payne. That's all we're trying to do. We're going to continue that mission here on the I Love Seaville Show as we get through this together. And as we come together, I think we can get through this, guys. I'm trying to also be positive here and I'm also trying to be realistic. It's about coming together now and moving forward. And, you know, the social distancing, staying home, self-quarantining, being mindful of hygiene and whatnot. You know, we try to close with the, the message of the golden rule, treat everybody in your life how you want to be treated yourself. Now more than ever, okay? Let's work together. My name is Jerry Miller. It's the I Love Seaville Show. I want to thank Michael Payne for coming on the program. We will be back in the saddle tomorrow at 12:30. Enjoy your afternoon. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you. Do you want to get, why don't we get a photo where we're both on this side and sitting down and not on the banner, the banner, and then we'll get you out of here. I didn't get.